Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At the workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Given the recent dramatic rise in COVID case rates within the community and due to the size of the council's chambers and number of attendees, masks will be required for all attending the meeting in person, vaccinated or not. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pascal-wog.gov/agenda. And please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinars. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with housekeeping out of the way, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you, and we're all here. May we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, and we'll just get right down to business here. The next is verbal reports from council members. Any council members have anything they would like to report?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Councilmember Maloney, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Councilmembers Roach and Mayor Protem Barajas and I met just a little bit ago, right before this meeting, to discuss the redistricting maps and just take a look at what's been proposed by the State Redistricting Committee. So more to come on that. We're on a pretty quick turnaround. But Gordon Thompson, Honeywell, our lobbyists, are going to be drafting up an approach that hopefully will help us be able to share our perspective and kind of what we're seeing as that my understanding will be coming back in front of the council. Hopefully, I'll put Mr. Zabel on the spot on this one. Hopefully, this next council meeting, I think the timeline has to be about that quick.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and the rest of the council members who participated in that. I know that was quite the topic on the radio media the other day, and it was very interesting and a lot of input from the community. So yes, looking forward to see what will happen there. Thank you for that, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? All right. If not, then we're going to get right into the items of discussion tonight. And the first item is our Pasco Public Facilities District Updates to the Charter and Validity Issue Process. Mr. Ferguson, do you want to kick us off with that?
You bet. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, this is another change to the charter. We found some other items that the PPFD needed to get amended in their charter based on some updates to the law. I can walk through the changes, but they're pretty straightforward. The largest change really has to do with making sure that it's clear that the PFD now, thanks to a lot of hard work by a lot of people for several years, is able to fully take advantage of the recreational facilities taxing ability for recreational facilities. So that's a large... So we're amending a portion there to the main portion, Article 4, dealing with the purpose, changing it from defined to allowed. That's the major change in the beginning section. Then later on, the other major change is Article 5. We're deleting that in its entirety. That's based on a 2012 bill that the legislature passed that limited the forming jurisdictions, any ability or to in any way restrict the statutory authorized taxing authority for the district. So they can't even limit their own abilities there. So our charter still reflected the 2002 ability of council to approve any ballot initiatives that the district may pursue, and that's no longer compliant with the law. So we're catching that and tuning those things up. So yeah, those seem to be the major changes, but I'm happy to answer any questions and field them.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Any questions from council on the changes to this resolution? So I guess the only question that, again, I think you pretty much paraphrased it real quick. On Section 5.2, the elimination of Item E is just so that we'd be in line with today's...
That's correct. Yeah, so it was really interesting. We tried to do a little research to give some context about how that changed and why that changed. And it specifically dealt with the item in the Greater Wenatchee Public Facilities District. They had an issue that was pretty noteworthy. They defaulted on some bonds. And so the legislature came in and remedies a few things, and they added this provision because they decided that they didn't want to leave the bill... It appears anyway that they didn't want to leave the forming jurisdictions, any authority to restrict the PFDs. They wanted them to be able to make those decisions. It also required, the major portion of that bill requires, an independent feasibility analysis, which is a huge factor going into these projects now that has to be done prior. So to make sure that they pencil out essentially. So yeah, it's not real clear why this was implemented, but it was put in, and we need to get our charter back in line.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you for that explanation. Any one more call from council? Any questions on this topic? All right. Well, thank you for that. Next, we'll go to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Recommendations for 2022. And tonight, we have with us Ms. Angela Passion.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. State authorizes a collection of lodging tax of 4% for short-term rentals, so generally your hotel motels, so anything under 30 days. And with that, the city has established the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which is charged with reviewing those applications and providing recommendations to council. So for this year's application, which would be for 2022 funding, we basically, sorry, our process was we opened it and we took in comments from prior years about the advertising and how we're reaching further into our community and our community partners. So we did utilize our Economic Development Manager, Mike Gonzalez, to help us with that. We published on not only social media and our website, but we also did direct communications with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Kalima Pasco Partnership Association, Franklin County Historic Society and Museum, Eagle Media Company, Latin Business Authority, the Pasco Chamber, Visit Tri-Cities, and then we also sent and provided this application process to our Arts and Culture Commission and the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission. We received six proposals, and the committee convened on September 10th of this year to review those and provide recommendations to city council. I will note that five of these are contractual agreements, long-term commitments that we have with this funding. And then we did receive one additional that the committee discussed. As we're all aware, the tourism industry has been impacted severely by COVID-19, and we do still anticipate, you know, a lower revenue than we would have expected prior to that. The funding requests that we received did exceed the $500,000 revenue, $500,000 in revenue that we are anticipating for 2022. However, there is fund balance of approximately $445,000 at the start of 2022 that would be able to provide some coverage for that. So tonight, we provide the recommendations that are coming from the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission and staff request discussion and further direction for these recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I was at that meeting with everybody involved, and it was a very good, interactive, lot of discussion on the distribution of these. And so with that, I'll open it up to any comments from council.
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. I thank you for the presentation, Ms. Pashon. My question is about exceeding the expected revenue. I seem to recall that, what was it, last year, that we allocated or we authorized allocation of a significant portion of their fund reserve? And the argument was that it was well in excess of a year's worth of revenue, and you know, we're trying to get back down to a more, you know, into a reasonable place, make sure that we're spending the money, you know, in the lean years when we need that additional funding available. What's the rationale for why we would continue to do so this year? I mean, we're now starting to get down and sort of eat away. What's the number of reserve that we're, that the committee is anticipating that we need or that staff would recommend that we have?
You know, I would have to check with the committee specifically. We didn't discuss a specific level in which to go down for the revenue. I will note that the one request that is not of a long-term commitment, so no matter what, we would need to exceed the anticipated revenue for those commitments due to contractual agreements. The $8,000 for the LBA was discussed at length with the committee. And with LBA being a new applicant to this process, the committee discussed at great length how they've kind of proceeded with determining... It was, and sorry, let me backtrack. I can't answer the specific amount in which they're comfortable going down, but I will say that we do anticipate the revenue picking back up in 2022. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, I guess, so when reading the packet, it says that the estimated revenue in 2022 is $500,000, and the allocation here is something like $40,000 or $50,000 over it. So I'm not talking about any particular applicant. That's not what I'm trying to do here. I was just trying to understand what is the prudent fund balance to have in something like this. I know different funds and different organizations have a different threshold for financial... What do they need to make sure they can always meet those financial commitments? But I would hate to be in a spot where we're authorizing an allocation above and beyond the expected revenue, and then what point does that become imprudent? And I guess I was just, I'm hoping that we can, before we vote on this, have that information in front of us of what the recommended number is.
Absolutely. I can talk with our finance director as well. I know that there's those fiscal policies that I will confirm with Director Sigdale and have that available for when it goes forward to you all again.
Great. Appreciate it. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else? If not, then if it comes to us at next week's meeting, I'll with an explanation for that. Thank you so much for bringing that forward, Ms. Pashon. All right. Next, we'll go to the Inclusive, Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission's Strategic Equity Plan Recommendation. Again, Ms. Pashon.
I'm just not going to sit down. Thank you. So in 2018, the city council proactively established the Limited Term Inclusivity Commission, which is now known as the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission. We term it IDEC because it is a mouthful. But IDEC's focus was to provide recommendations to the city council for implementation by city staff. With some challenges, including turnover of members, restrictions due to COVID, IDEC has remained determined to provide those recommendations to city council, and that is why they are here tonight. A top priority for IDEC's revised work plan that was presented earlier this year was, is to help the city develop a strategic equity plan. Now, many jurisdictions are actively working on these plans. However, the majority of the plans that have been established are with large metropolitan jurisdictions. We have Commissioner Naima Chambers Smith tonight to present the DEI, so Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Strategic Planning Worksheet. And staff is seeking council discussion and consideration, and if favorable, staff will include this in the biennial adjustment. And staff sees this as an opportunity that the consultant, should this be favorable, work directly with the executive department to help through this process. So Naima, you should have access and control, and I hand it over to you.
All right. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes. Well, it's kind of small.
It is small, Naima.
Very weird at home. Is that helping?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if I can...
There you go.
A little bit more.
A little bit more.
That little bit better? Yes?
Yeah, it's a little better.
Okay. Let's see if there's any way I can have it maximized, it looks like, so...
Okay. Can the council see it okay? There you go.
Yes, we can see it.
We can see it. But the little clock thing, if you can move that.
Oh, so it's showing the wrong screen?
Yeah, there you go. There you go. I think we're good.
Hold on just a second. I think it's showing...
We can see it real well now, Naimi.
Are you just showing a screen that says the Strategic Equity Plan Outline?
On the webex, I can currently see nothing.
I was just about to say, whatever happens, that's lost. It was better.
Unfortunately, we didn't have a practice session, so let's try this.
There you go.
Okay. And is it showing like notes as well or just the screen?
It looks like it's showing a browser view with a Strategic Equity Plan Outline box within that.
Okay, so that looks like that's it. All right, I guess we can get started then. Well, good evening, city council members. Again, my name is Naima Chambers Smith, and I serve as the Vice Chair on our city's Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission. And on behalf of the commission, I'm here to share an equity strategic plan outline, which is part of our work plan goal number three, to help city council develop an equity strategic plan to enact their commitment to Resolution 3820 of Being an Inclusive City. The City of Pasco's Equity Plan should articulate city council's vision, inspire commitment, and inform the actions of the city and city staff to be an inclusive city. The Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission asks that you all consider the nine steps of the outline during your iterative assessment and planning process to develop a comprehensive strategy. Council was previously provided in advance several examples of how to create a racial equity action plan. The majority of the tools provided were from GEAR, also known as the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. So here we have the first steps, the steps one through three, which include establishing a DEI vision, strategy, and goals. Having a vision and mission statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion established by a city council provides a foundation for city management and administration recognition that DEI is a priority in all city personnel practices and decision-making. A mission statement generates a purposeful sense of direction for the city, both internally as well as externally. So both the DEI vision and mission statement should explain the why, the what, and the how. The why: Why is DEI work important to the City of Pasco? The what: What does city council want to accomplish? What are the desired end conditions, such as what needs do you all want to meet? What issues do you all want to resolve, and what changes are desired? And then the how: How does this work help you all accomplish city council's mission and goals? Is it through new opportunities, new products and/or services, branding, outreach, operational effectiveness? And that might look something like ensuring affordable housing and support services to our most vulnerable members of our community. Step two involves strategy. By identifying where in the City of Pasco on the DEI continuum, like where is the City of Pasco? I'm sorry, on the DEI continuum. Before embarking on a strategic planning, an overall assessment such as an equity audit of where the city is on the DEI continuum will help evaluate the city's current internal capabilities. That is actually a two-part assessment that will require for you all to first determine where the city is on the DEI development continuum, and then second, determine what level of DEI maturity the city has. And I'd be happy to provide city staff resources to help with both, as well as advise on a local consultant that can assist with the process. Next is determining how council and city staff plan to approach this work and what organizational levers you all will utilize, such as leadership, talent management, staff development, community, culture, data, policies, and practices. And this might look like DEI leadership coaching being offered to management or implementing the usage of anonymous resumes and diverse interview panels in order to mitigate race and gender bias in the recruitment and hiring process. It might also look like disaggregating data to uncover inequities and disparate outcomes, and even tracking supplier diversity of spending on minority suppliers. Next is step three, which is identifying goals. What three to four goals will you all accomplish and by when? And what are the potential obstacles and/or barriers that are anticipated? So next, I'd like for you all to please take a look at this next slide that shows an example of a city's racial equity strategy plan. This is actually an example provided out of the GEAR Racial Equity Toolkit. It is the City of Portland's equity goals and strategies. And so I'll just read one of the goals. Goal number two here is, "We will strengthen outreach, public engagement, and access to city services for communities of color and immigrant and refugee communities, and support or change existing services using racial equity best practices." And then you can see here, they outline their overall six strategies. Now, as you can see, the City of Portland's overall strategy is definitely aligned with the strategic planning outline that we're reviewing this evening. Here we have steps four through six, which is measurement, outcomes, and evaluation. When thinking of measurement, ask yourselves what metrics are important for the city to measure? Are they financial? Is it organizational culture? Are they behavioral metrics or metrics on workplace performance, program participation, or accountability? The next question is, what baseline data will be used to measure progress? Is it cultural competency, workplace climate, stakeholders' sentiment, community partnerships, or workforce profile, diverse leadership, learning, and growth? Next is step five, and determining desired outcomes. That is, who will be impacted and in what way? What are the desired or what are the expected and/or desired short-term and long-term outcomes of this work? And what is our desired future state? And finally, here, we have the evaluation plan. How will you evaluate the effectiveness of the city's activities and efforts? How will you all evaluate the effectiveness of the city's plan and results? And finally, we have steps seven through nine, partners, investment, and implementation. So when you all look at partners, ask, who are your accountability partners in this work? And this might look like city boards, commissions, and departments. It could look like professional organizations, culturally specific community organizations, neighboring cities, the schools, et cetera. Next is to determine what investments are needed, what staff, time, and budget will be allocated to this work. And finally, it's implementation. That's asking, how will the city's work be communicated? What tasks are required to accomplish council's goals? And how will council's action plan be implemented? How will this work be sustained over time, and what will be the evaluation process? In summary, a strong racial equity action plan is guided by a clear vision of racial equity and structured to achieve meaningful and measurable results. A simple plan structure provided here by GEAR includes the following components which align with the nine steps addressed in the outline. So vision and/or results, in other words, the community-level conditions you all are aiming to achieve. Community indicators, which are the means by which you can measure community conditions disaggregated by race. And then outcomes, in other words, a future state of being resulting from a change at the city level. Strong outcomes articulate a clear improvement or define how much improvement will actually take place. And being able to start outcomes out with using words like increase or decrease will help with that. Next is action, that is the specific things the city will do to achieve the outcomes. It's important to note that strong actions should start with verbs. And then performance measures, which are a quantifiable measure of how well an action is working. Different types of measures include quantity, which is how much did you do? Excuse me. Quality, how well did you do it? And impact, is anyone better off? Next is establishing a timeline, that is, the month, quarter, and/or year an action will be accomplished. And finally, there's accountability. That's the position or body that is responsible for the action or is accountable for its completion. And that's basically it. I just want to say that on behalf of the commission, we appreciate you all inviting me this evening. We're grateful to be able to support a city council who is making efforts to create equity that ensures access to opportunities and well-being for the entire community by infusing DEI practices into a strategic planning. So thank you all so much for your time. We hope that you all found value in this outline. And we encourage you all that if you need additional support or have any questions, we welcome you to attend any of our monthly meetings.
Well, thank you so much, Naima. Appreciate the work you and the commission does. And it's awesome to see what can become of this. So comments or questions from council?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Serrano. Do you have like a specific need from us at this point? I mean, I saw the, I looked at the steps and obviously paid attention to this. And I also heard you mention a facilitator. I mean, what's kind of the next, the next thing, I guess, what I'm getting at?
So I think what you're asking is what's next steps for our council?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So in regards to what's next steps, I would say that that is actually up to you all in deciding what direction you go. But my recommendation would be taking a look at that, the GEAR Racial Equity Toolkit, and using that as a guidance or as a roadmap, so to speak, on what direction to go and where to start off within the actual strategic planning process. And again, IDEC would be happy to support you all in that. So when you get ready to that planning stage, you know, definitely reach out to us because we'd be happy to support.
Councilmember Serrano, this is Angela Staffle-Zahn for the commission. What we would be looking for from the staff side is if the city council would like to pursue the strategic equity plan, we recommend a consultant to work through this process with us, and that would be done in conjunction with the executive department directly. That, we just want to make sure that we include this in the biennial adjustment if that is something council would like us to pursue.
Okay, thank you. I mean, if I recall, the target market, that was somewhere between the $15,000 and $25,000 mark. Was that a one-time, a per annual?
So from looking at the, and again, it's a little bit challenging in regards to most of the strategic equity plans that we've been able to find, especially going through the procurement process or the process we are required to do. Many are in that process right now, so they're advertising. And so we did find a handful, and we believe that $15,000 to $25,000 would be for the consultant to work through the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I just wanted to say thank you to Naima for the presentation and to Ms. Pashon for the introduction. And I think for me personally, I would say that this is something I've just been waiting for to get direction from the IDEC as to how we can, as a council and a city, start, you know, working towards objectives. And so it's great that this commission has started to put those together and put together a plan for us and a proposal of how we do that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. So I envision the staff that we would hire to come in and kind of do what we do at our retreat. But would that be with the commission, or would that be with the staff or the council? Who would that be with?
I actually kind of want to...
I...
Sorry, I was going to pop that over to city manager Zabel. He's been through way more of these planning processes.
Yeah, I think we're envisioning one first step would obviously be to fund the effort in the biennial budget. And so provided council is supportive of that, we would make that part of our request going forward. And council will be able to take action on that before the end of the year. And then next year, at some point in time, earlier in the year, we do an RFP for consultants and make a selection. It's within... It's a, it's within the city manager's authority in terms of the expenditure. So we'd be able to make that selection administratively, but we'd be able to work with the consultant, the public. And ultimately bring that plan to the council for your consideration.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. Does anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, this is Councilman Maloney. Can you hear it?
Yes, Councilwoman Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. And Naima, thank you so much for bringing this presentation forward and the work that IDEC is doing. Like I'll echo Councilmember Roach's comment of, we were absolutely waiting for this and so glad to see it in front of us. I know when we when we first formed this, the the IDEC, one of the things that we we talked about was the fact that. The city council could probably spend a very large portion of our time focused on just trying to figure out how to best. Create, you know, better conditions in in Pasco for in terms of equity and. And and that we really needed outsourced of the help, we needed help to be able to get there. So really glad to see us fully support the budget ask. And actually, honestly, one of the things I've been thinking about a lot is is as we're going through some of these master planning efforts. For example, the downtown master plan, which we'll be talking about later in the agenda tonight. This is an area where we hear, where I hear all the time from, you know. Our Latino community in our downtown that they don't feel like they're being heard. They don't feel like the code is fair. They don't feel like like they're really being represented. Like it's kind of like that that city is supporting the best that they that we can be. And so really looking forward to how we can make sure that even before we have this plan in place. Is there a way that the IDEC can help us make sure that those that that the right people are engaging in the master planning effort and some of these? There's an outreach portion of it and I I guess I would hope, I'm not sure if this is being done, but I really hope that the the IDEC has an opportunity to. To participate and look into that. The Parks and Rec master plan that's coming up, we're looking at facilities and we're looking at parks and. Understand it's an unequal level of service at times between, you know, the our older part of town and and the newer parks we have on the. You know, and newer neighborhoods. So those are all things that I've been thinking about a lot that was. Over the last couple of meetings. So anyways, so excited for the the we can move forward with the plan. And hoping that in addition to being able to move forward in a plan next year, that even in the interim, that we can get a larger engagement. And and help trying to implement some of the even just the theoretical standpoint of how can we. Improve the the way we approach our community in terms of of equity. So. I guess it's a little 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 extra ask of you tonight. So but thank you so much for bringing this forward and representing that IDEC. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Yes, Councilwoman Barajas.
Yes, just wanted to say thank you again for the presentation. This is, this is a great plan. Looking forward to seeing it move forward and thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. And again, you know, when when this was, this this commission was started, I I think the whole council made a commitment and. You know, I don't, I think it's within reason. So I I think just gauging on the council's approval. I think we can move move forward with this and and get funding for the biennial budget.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Well, thank you once again. Have a great evening and. Again, just send our appreciation to the rest of the of the commission. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Pechon. And now we'll move on to the next item in the agenda. And that is the life and safety program for commercial structures. And tonight, we have Rick White to kick us off with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff has attempted to consolidate the discussion the council had a couple of weeks ago at the September work thirteenth workshop into. The bulleted guidelines contained in your agenda report. The agenda report also lists the probable funding sources. There are several of them, but. But most practically, it's it's probably going to be focus of the ARPA funding, which seems to offer the. Least amount of obstacles for for assisting businesses. Of course, use of ARPA has its own eligibility parameters. And I believe that the the pertinent points probably of the council discussion will be focused on. A couple of important issues, namely the location where the funds will be focused. The amount, which is seem to be roughly in the thirty thousand dollar area, both in terms of discussion and. Past funding amounts for the CARES Act distribution for business assistance. And what the eligible improvements will be that will be focused on either increasing physical capacity or stability. Of of the businesses themselves. So again, the agenda report lists several funding sources and some staff develop guidelines that can be used to. Put the program together.
Thank you, Mr. White. Council, we also have Mr. Gonzalez here who can help answer questions. I know you've been very involved, Mr. Gonzalez, in the process, but. I I guess what I would also like, I don't want to jump ahead, but does council have any comments before I? I kind of give my thoughts a little bit on the program as Mr. White described it?
This is Councilman Maloney. I can kick it off if if it served the council well.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, I sent, Mr. White, I sent you a a pretty extensive email earlier today, kind of collecting some of my thoughts and questions. And I understand that some of them may take longer to to fully address than than intended. But I guess when when, one of my biggest questions is when I when I see a number like, you know, say thirty thousand dollars. We're hearing estimates for for, you know, sprinkler systems for some of these buildings that are six figures. And so I guess I'm not sure that the number is well calibrated to the need. Our previous business assistance was to defray lost revenue and, well, businesses were still incurring expenses, which is. I guess an entirely different benchmark in my mind to, you know, to the need of of a physical infrastructure. So I I guess I was trying to understand better, one of the primary things I want to understand better is what is the scale of the need? I know the number, the number in my head is large and I know we can't necessarily fund every request right now. But do you, Mr. White, do you have a sense of of what would it take to improve our downtown? Buildings, infrastructure to the point where they would they would meet these life safety codes? And be able to open at the sort of capacity that once upon a time they could operate at?
Boy, that I I am also uncertain as to the scale of the possible costs of this program. If we're talking six figures, let's just use a hundred thousand dollars as a as a, an assumption. We're looking at twenty programs and we're at two million dollars in in funding. I suspect that now what you and also, Mr. Maloney, the, at least staff's recommendation is there is no. Owner or or business match for these funds. I just wanted to point that out, but if. You you may in fact be looking at upwards of a hundred thousand dollars for sprinkling and or ventilation. And or electrical improvements, given the age of the structures.
So I guess, Mr. White, I guess my my initial comment is that the the number that we have here seems to be, seems to be low. At worst, the idea of not having a match doesn't make much sense if we're gonna require if if to to even implement the the upgrade that the. Owner or the business owner, the property owner, depending, would have to kick in a significant portion just to get them there. So. I guess I'm 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 a little, little concerned of where that number is. I understand that we we don't, we we may not be in a position to allocate all of the rest of the ARPA funding towards a program like this. At this time, but I think if there's, if we can make sure we're tailoring tailoring the intent. But we may need to up the up the the dollar amount to make sure that it is matching more with the actual needed improvements. I I just don't believe all the businesses, especially after suffering through this this last year and a half of pandemic. And the impact to the businesses are going to be able to necessarily afford the, afford the difference between these two. So. That's that's I guess my 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 number one biggest comment or concern about it. I'm just looking through my notes. I apologize. As I said, Mr. White, I know I sent you a pretty extensive email and and I apologize. It was relatively late in the day, but I wasn't able to get to it over the weekend. So I think most of the rest of them are are nuances that we could probably work in behind the scenes after we've, we as council have decided on the vision. But we have an immediate need, I guess, in my, is down in downtown. And so if we can tailor it to making sure this meets the immediate need for the businesses that 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 are have been really impacted. And are 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 one of the biggest obstacles between us and having a vibrant downtown is these business, these building upgrades. If we can find the right nexus between making sure that the dollar sign matches, the need matches the intent of of. At least from where I see it, of creating a vibrant downtown and helping and helping downtown and all the downtown businesses. Recover from this pandemic. That's that's my intent. So how we, where we can get there most thoroughly and quickest is. Is where I'm at. I'm not, I guess I'm not sure as a program instructor that we're quite quite getting there. So. I know there's a lot of elements here that that cover portions of that, but I just want to make sure that we're really understanding and meeting that need. So thank you. That's, I guess that's my summary level comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
I'm just curious if I I didn't get to this detail in in my notes, so I apologize if this is somehow I missed this. But is there some form of condition, conditions that can be put? Let's say if an improvement is made and then, you know, an owner decides just he wants to sell the. The building for upgraded costs and, you know, just making sure that there's skin in the game and there's also just now. You know, the city's protected from, you know, just someone. You've seen this as a as a money-making situation as a owner. Not necessarily a business owner, but an owner of a building. Just curious if we have any restrictions or any kind of conditions. I know when we we do. The first time home buyer, you know, there's a time period that folks need to be in the in the homes, things like that. I'm just curious if that's been discussed.
Yes, Mr. Alvarado, I I think that would be a prudent condition to. Obviously explore and then also include in any kind of agreement with the owner or business.
This is Councilmember Serrano. These list buildings as of fifty years old. I guess I'm questioning whether or not that's too far out there. I mean, do we have buildings that are thirty years old that didn't have the same type of life? Safety mechanisms. I mean, I assume that's based on a code and a standard that's evolved over time. And so presumably you can walk back to X date and they wouldn't have had those amenities. Can you talk to me about Y fifty and and if we're gonna miss the mark because there's, again, maybe thirty-five or twenty-seven or whatever? Can you help me out there?
Yeah, it was chosen, actually it was chosen because that seemed to offer the most flexibility. Most of the buildings, at least in the downtown area, were constructed prior to nineteen seventy. And then fifty years is the point at which a bill building is eligible to be historical. Which is a, is a threshold used level for historic preservation. But that that really is the only connection. Certainly, it can be less or more, depending on council's policy direction on that that issue.
Okay, and I recall that historic conversation and we do not have a historic district or any type of zoning or anything like that downtown, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, and and from the historic preservation side of a fifty-year-old building, is there any issue with? Making these types of changes in a way that would impact whether or not they're list eligible or something of that nature? Becomes problematic then for the owner?
No, I I I would, no, I don't believe so. It would take. I think you'd have to try to become ineligible by doing safety and system improvements.
I would assume so as well, but you never know. Some of these codes, they wanna, you know, keep it as true to possible, but, you know, you don't want someone to burn down to look. Original. So, all right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. And I guess I would just like to clarify, I know that last week, Mr. Cortinas came in and said that I was wanting to lower the amount. I just wanted to be clear that, that I, when I mentioned the twenty thousand dollars, what I wanted is for everybody. Everybody to get help. And I'm not, I wasn't saying specifically to lower it to twenty thousand. You know, just not knowing how much we have available to provide. I just wanted to make sure that everybody got a share of of the assistance that they needed. So I just wanted to make that clear, but and I don't know how difficult that's gonna be to know. Who would qualify, how we would give it to them, and then just distribute it to where, to where everybody got assistance. So. So anyway, that was that was my comment to that. And I think. And and help me out here, Mike, if if I'm maybe jumping ahead, but. Is it appropriate time to talk about C two right now or should we wait?
Well, I think we should wait.
Okay, we'll wait on that. So, okay, so so with that, I think we should continue on to. You know, I would, I would be in favor of, again, giving those people that are that are applying and acquiring. Or have a need for the assistance to provide them. Whatever it is that the funding is available to provide them. And I I do agree with Councilmember. Alvarado to make sure they have skin in the game and ensure that, you know, they're not just gonna turn around and get rid of it, but to have. To have some kind of commitment so that we can make sure that we're, you know, moving forward with the growth there in the downtown area.
This is Councilman Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Mayor Martinez, I just want to reflect on your, on your comments there. I I think what will be the most impactful for. Downtown Pasco as a, as a, as a, as an area, as a region. Will not necessarily be to spread the money to everyone that could be eligible. But instead make sure that we are successful at achieving strategically the the biggest. Impact to the overall downtown region with the funding. Which is why I'm recommending that we make sure we're targeting it closer to what is going to overall be required for. For the upgrades as opposed to making sure everyone gets a little piece, because I don't think a little piece is going to get most of businesses anywhere. Whereas a larger piece that that covers a substantially more of the of the overall cost of the upgrade is going to end up being a more impactful. Action for the city council to take at this time. I know that overall, we're not gonna have enough money to do everything that needs to be done. I don't think that there's. I don't think that we have enough ARPA funding to to allocate to this. Maybe I'm wrong and I hope Mr. White can can get to the bottom of that and and help us understand. Maybe maybe the number is. Closer than we think. But I guess my 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 preference and recommendation would be that we look at. How can we target completing upgrades as opposed to providing everyone a number that could be too low for them?
And and I respect that, Councilmember Maloney. I just don't, I just, it's just too difficult for me to to, excuse me, to determine. That that one building would get it and get some assistance in that in that others. I I just, I don't know how that would be fair, but. But I'm open to suggestions. Yes, City Manager Dave Zabel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I thi- I think the amount, we talked about that a little bit. It is probably, I I guess I would ask council to kind of consider that a placeholder and and I think the thirty thousand was kind of consistent with. With the business assistance. I think we we recognize that is probably low for some of the improvements that need to be made. But I think there's a policy level question. The council is, you know, one is. If we're if we're on board with the types of improvements. That are that are discussed on the ARPA bullet points, ventilation, electrical, fire suppression, weatherization. And two is, I I think, a a policy question, maybe a bigger one in my opinion, is. Is this a hundred percent grant? Or is is this the city's effort to to try to provide a big enough chunk of dollars? You know, up to a certain amount, maybe it's a fifty percent grant or seventy-five percent grant or something like that. That would encourage a a property owner or business owner to to make that kind of investment to move their business forward. I think, Mr. Or, excuse me, Councilmember Maloney's comment about. It may be difficult in some respects for a business owner having gone through the impacts of COVID on their business. it may be difficult in some respects for a business owner having gone through uh, the impacts of COVID on their business to, to have that kind of cash available. So that's, I think that's certainly something council needs to be thinking about as well. So I think those, those two questions, uh, definitely, uh, I think warrant some discussion and, and we'd appreciate some direction on it. And then the other piece I just wanted to remind council of, we've talked about this a little bit before. Uh, Director Sigdell's reminded of us, uh, reminded of this several times, and that is uh, restaurants uh, probably have a much broader range of, of uses for ARPA funds than maybe some of the other buildings. So it's gonna be more difficult, I think, to your point, Mayor, to shoehorn in an improvement on certain buildings or businesses than it is others, just because the ARPA legislation was almost written around, in some respects, written around restaurants and assisting restaurants.
Okay.
So this, this is Councilmember Maloney again. So Mr. Zabel, you asking us to provide answers to those questions right now as to help staff move forward quickly?
Well, I, I, it would, you know, certainly if council's able to provide some specifics on that, that would be helpful. Uh, you know, the, is the intent to a hundred percent grant or some portion of a, of a project up to a certain amount? And, and kind of a, what would that amount be? I mean, let me, let me ask Director White, how many buildings do you think we're talking about in that area? Total.
The common wall area of downtown, how many buildings? Uh, there's probably I, I don't know, I bet there's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty buildings.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my guesstimate in my head as well. And not every, not every building, I don't think, needs uh, needs improvements. And not every building would necessarily qualify with, under the ARPA rules as well.
Well, I guess we'd have to, I, I guess we'd have to find out who would qualify and, you know, the needs of the downtown. Um, I, I just don't believe that right now in, uh, with the climate and after so long in this pandemic that anybody can really make a commitment to, you know, uh, to make an investment right now, because they don't have anything to make an investment with. And so that, it just, I just, we're asking somebody to say, hey, we'll help you if you help us, but they can't help us. I mean, so to me, I, I think we would, uh, it would have to be a, a grant at this point if we're gonna have any impact down there. Any, any comments or suggestions?
Yeah, yeah, I have a, some, so, so my thoughts would be, um, perhaps the, and this is some of the details I sent in, uh, in an email to Mr. White. And I apologize, I was trying not to go through my whole list. Um, but the, my, my thought would be a possibility of a zero, a zero interest loan. Um, that, that after a period of time prior, um, sufficiently prior to, um, you know, the, the end of the ARPA funding of eligibility, um, that would be, the loan would be forgiven after a cer, certain point in time. So that requires skin in the game, um, not a, not a direct, um, immediate turnaround of being able to sell the building. Um, and it might, uh, might provide some funds back into the, um, into the overall funding balance to be able to pay some of that forward. The number might not be to the level that would be impactful, so this may, may, may end up being a wash in terms of staff time and requirements. But I, I can certainly imagine us being able to structure a way that doesn't require any upfront payment, but certainly does require them to have skin in the game, um, as a, you know, and, and from a fashion of a, of a loan. Um, I hope that we can be creative to be able to solve that, that sort of question. Um, I, I guess what I'm thinking about, um, Mr. Zabel, your comments about eligibility. Certainly, I think one of the key factors that we'd need to consider is what is the benefit? I mean, if you're talking about a business that, that would, that would have um, sprinklers installed and then not be able to serve additional patrons or anything like that, that maybe isn't a top priority. But a business that could then open that capacity when, you know, and, and maybe double their current capacity, um, if they had sprinklers. Well, that, that seems like a much, a much better, you know, bang for the buck, so to speak. I want to be pretty business, um, um, agnostic on this because I, I don't want to pick winners and losers between businesses. That's not the point. The point for me is that there's a long-term investor in our downtown. And so when we're talking about existing restaurants and such like that, that's where I see an additional capacity increase when we're talking about being able to get more people in downtown walking around the businesses. A, a cell phone repair store, for, for instance, may have a, a different impact or a lesser impact from COVID than a restaurant did, uh, as a, for instance. So, um, so I think that there's, there might be some ways of structuring the eligibility that, um, that ties in a little bit to COVID impact, a little bit to what that use would be, um, for, for that funding. What would it, what would it enable in terms of expanded capacity such that could be structured in a way that would make this program impactful? Um, and without, still without requiring a whole lot of, again, uh, upfront expenditures from a, from a business who probably doesn't have the money right now. So, uh, Mr. Zabel, did I answer the questions or did I miss one of them?
Yeah, I think you did, but you actually made me think of another one and, you know, it, council's intent in terms of policy is uh, is the intent to, to uh, help support current uses and maybe the expansion of that kind of use in the building, like uh, increasing the ca, capacity of a restaurant, for instance. Or is it, uh, if somebody were to come in with a building that maybe currently isn't used as a restaurant, that you'd outfit that building with a sprinkler and allow it uh, uh, to, to uh, be a new use in a building that was previously used for something else? I think that's probably, yeah, I mean, to your point, uh, you know, Councilmember Maloney, and I, I've been kind of thinking similar, uh, similar to you. You're almost, we're almost gonna have to look at a kind of a return on investment type uh, process where uh, your, your, your application would have to really get into some level of detail about what's the impact of these improvements? What, what's that impact going to be? Is it gonna allow you to increase your capacity from ninety-nine to two-hundred? Or is it gonna allow you to increase your, your capacity? We have one building downtown, I think we've been working with that building owner for a while, and I, I think that person understands it now. But sprinklers would get them four more people, uh, in terms of rated capacity to their building. Uh, however, some improvements to their, their back wall would allow them some outside space that would, that would allow far more people, probably less money. You know, so it's not, not everything folks are asking for. It may not have the impact they think it's going to. So I, I think we need to do a little bit of work with uh, potential applicants as well to make sure that, you know, council approves a program to ma, to make sure they are asking for something that's gonna be competitive and, and have a good return on investment for them in the city, those dollars.
And Mr. Zabel, I guess to answer your, your original, um, additional question that was asked is certainly from my perspective, it's a, it's current, um, uses and current business owners that are, um, are much more urgent to me than, um, the potential future. Um, I, I, we know that the investment that's required in downtown is going to be long-term. But we have businesses that are suffering today and we need to support them, and that's certainly where my focus is. So thank you, uh, for all, for, for tolerating the fact that I am very passionate and very engaged on this topic and hoping that we can, we can come to some sort of consensus quickly so we can get the money out. I know we can, we can, um, run this through our bureaucracy until, until we all grow old and die. Uh, but I, I very much want to, as quickly as possible, try to, try to start moving forward in this so we can, we can help businesses that are hurting right now recover. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
This is Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
I don't know if this will be helpful or even feasible, but I think having perhaps three alternatives of, um, perhaps a, a variation that, of the range of grant versus loan, um, in, in combinations of that could be, could be helpful for us to know what, you know, perhaps what's gonna be the best uh, strategic way to look at this. I don't know if that's feasible, but I, I, that's, I think what's on, on my mind right now.
Okay. Does that provide any hope?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a question? I thought it was a suggestion by Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, it was a suggestion. No, I'm just talking about, is that enough information to move forward to, to get us going with, uh, with the program to get these monies distributed?
Yeah, I think so. I uh, would be interested in, um, one more, um, i, uh, issue related to the funds. Uh, are we focusing these funds on, as suggested in the agenda report, common wall structures or, uh, complexes anywhere? Or specifically in the downtown common wall area?
Council?
Councilmember Maloney, uh, my recommendation would be either C two or, um, or common wall downtown. Um, I, I understand that there may be other needs and there's some, some one-offs that are outside that area. Um, but when you talk about the, the, the crux of the matter here, especially the ones that are most impacted by us having to cancel the events and, and sort of tourism and, and engagement downtown brings, um, I think the common wall downtown, that region, however, Mr. White, it's best to, to tailor our limited funds there as a priority, um, would be, would be my, my hope and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sure with that as well.
Hey, this is, uh, Councilman Maloney. I have a question on this.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Hey, as far as the applications of this, do we have like people that are like, say, wanting to get, to go on a sprinkler system? I mean, do we have people that say they'll, if they're getting this money, they'll are a hundred percent ready to go? Because it seems like if somebody's, I know you were talking about like the back wall and sprinklers sometimes don't really help people as far as to gain more capacity, but as far as a fire prevention, considering we had that fire a couple of years ago, which burned other buildings, like the barber shop, I think it was. Um, do we have people that are like, say that they're ready to go if they get this money?
I don't know that I would go that far, Councilman Maloney. Uh, I, I think there have been a number of discussions though that, uh, staff has had with downtown businesses on, uh, building improvements in general. Um, I, I think that's certainly safe to say.
One, one thing I'll add, Rick, is several of businesses have gotten estimates for sprinklers. Uh, one of the problems is there's a real backlog on materials. So, yeah, e, even if, if a person has had an estimate, that's five, six months away for execution. So it's still gonna be quite a process.
Okay, thanks. I was just kind of curious on that and I don't know how far thirty thousand goes considering how everything seems to be going sky-high as far as on materials. But uh, I'd be more for if somebody had a system and again, we can make things safer, that, you know, on a sprinkler system, that it would be more of a grant than just a, a loan. Because I know it is difficult to, you know, provide this, the, you know, the safety measure, and it is a safety measure. So that's my two cents on this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Well, that's all we have to offer right now.
Yeah, I, I think as far as a, a program amount, um, you know, we, we have, uh, a number of buildings downtown and we're, we're familiar with some of them. And, uh, yeah, probably one or two of them, or at least one of them I can think of is just the sprinklers or a loan or upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, probably a hundred and twenty. Uh, others, you know, you're probably talking, you know, far less, a fraction of that. And, uh, something council might want to consider, uh, similar to what we did with the utility, um, assistance, uh, uh, fund or allocation was, we, we started off with a mount, kind of saw how it went and, uh, and then added to it later when, when we, uh, we saw the need and the response to it. Yeah, council added to it, I think, at least once, maybe twice. And that's been a pretty successful program. Um, we sell about, we have about a hundred and, I think Director Sigdell sent me a note earlier today, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in arrears. Uh, at one point in time, we're approaching eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's been pretty successful. Uh, may want to suggest and, and maybe Director White and I will take a look at it, uh, maybe suggest a, an initial allocation of seven hundred and fifty or a million dollars, uh, see how the application process goes and bring that back to council.
All right.
So just, just as a suggestion, I'd be curious if there was any uh, negative feedback to that. If that's acceptable, we can, we can maybe put that together and have some to you as early as next week, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just waiting, uh, if anybody has a response to that, council members? I think we're, we're, we'll move forward with that. All right, thank you for that, Mr. White. And, uh, next we'll move on into the next item. It's a downtown master plan update. Mr. White?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mike, um, it's great that Mike's still at the podium. He'll be doing a, a presentation, uh, to council, uh, that describes the planning efforts and the tasks, uh, for the downtown master plan process. Uh, we think we were very fortunate in getting the consulting team we did. We believe that, uh, the process will, will be, uh, very, very helpful in providing the best product, uh, for the economic health of, of downtown. And, um, with, with that, uh, I'll let, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, our Economic Development Manager, take over with the slides.
Thank you, Director White. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Honor and pleasure to be with you. Uh, this is my first time up here, so I, I think somebody's gonna tee it up for me on there. Uh, here we go. So, uh, yeah, I want to present to you the downtown master plan. Uh, this is a really extensive plan. Um, I do, I do want to address the equity piece right off the bat, because I know that's something Councilman, uh, Maloney mentioned. But, you know, from an equity standpoint and the group that we're working with framework, uh, they're one of the best in the business in terms of, of outreach, especially on the equity component. Uh, they have bilingual staff members that are reaching out, uh, to the business owners. We know this is a, a highly Hispanic business zone. Uh, I've been out there with our downtown Pasco authority, uh, with our staff, so we've really worked in conjunction. And I think, um, the community can rest assured that the equity component of this is really taken care of. And, um, been really impressed with that aspect of things, you know, as we move forward. Uh, here's a map of that area, uh, as we look at it. And, uh, most are familiar, Tacoma to the east, Fourteenth to the west, uh, Columbia to the south, uh, Monteville to the north is, is basically where this is going to cover. I want to give a, a real overview of what this plan is. This plan creates an incredibly detailed plan for downtown Pasco that really builds upon the existing assets. Most importantly engages the community around a shared vision for the future. Uh, plans include workshops, project webpage, online surveys and open house, several board and commission meetings. That'll be happening throughout this year and into twenty twenty-two. Uh, the plan really focuses on implementation, provides the community with a detailed strategy and actions that can be realized uh, in the short and long term. You know, this certainly is not a sprint, uh, this is a marathon. And, um, you know, as, as the company name suggests, it's a framework and, and that's what they do. Uh, that is their wheelhouse and I've, I've been really impressed with the process so far. Uh, with that being said, the consultant team is led by framework with support from BDS Planning and Design for Stakeholder Outreach, Econ Northwest for Real Estate and, uh, Market Analysis. So the timelines, uh, we've already been in the implementation process. Uh, we kicked off hard in July, we've been hard at work. Uh, Framework performed that kickoff meeting with city staff, uh, to review the work plan, confirm roles and responsibilities between the Colts, consultant, city staff, uh, Jacob Gonzalez, uh, myself, John Pat Borick, uh, we've all been really working hard. Uh, John and I hit the streets, uh, we've visited, uh, dozens of businesses in person, uh, along with the downtown Pasco authority. Framework has been engaged in that process too, again, with their bilingual outreach team. Uh, so again, uh, this is a really inclusive process, uh, that has involved face-to-face action. This isn't something, um, that was done via email. Uh, we're gonna call you on the phone, you really don't know who we are. Uh, this is really us getting into that downtown zone and really finding out what these business owners want. So again, we, we, we continue with our progress. We have reviewed all relevant existing plans, policies, background information, including the city's comprehensive plan, the transportation plans, capital programs, um, and, and many other things. Uh, want to go ahead and, and look at some of the scope of the work. Let me put my glasses on for this. So you're gonna, this kind of gives you a, a step-by-step approach in, in terms of the months and, and what's happening. So when, when you guys get the opportunity, uh, this really gives you a benchmark, uh, for each component within the plan. And then ultimately culminating, uh, with that final downtown plan, which, uh, will be delivered in May of twenty twenty-two. So, uh, again, it's, it's an inclusive process, it's really a teamwork process. Um, it's a, a matter of city staff engaging with framework, framework engaging with businesses, a, a public outreach component. So when you think of the messaging piece, I mean, it really comes full circle when you think of city staff to framework to businesses. This is not a one-way communication path. And I've been really impressed how framework is, is outreach with our businesses, who we know are, are largely Hispanic. Uh, many, uh, with our businesses who we know are, are largely Hispanic. Uh, many, uh, Spanish is their first language and, um, sometimes they're not comfortable with plans and things of this nature, but, um, framework has done just an, an excellent job of really digging in, uh, getting into the community and, and really relying on city staff. So here's what's been done so far. Again, I, I got a little bit ahead of myself, reviewed, uh, all relevant existing plans and policies. Ultimately, this information will inform development of that plan and will be summarized, uh, in existing conditions and memos. We continue on, uh, continue with what we're doing, reviewing the city zoning codes and development standards. Uh, we really want to understand the impact on zoning and coding. And that's something that, that framework is excellent at. I mean, this is really their wheelhouse. Really taking an inclusive and what we call culturally competent approach to looking at zoning, uh, to looking at coding and, and really seeing the impacts that it's having. So again, I, I know that's a big concern amongst the community and, and certainly in this business community. Uh, is in an inclusive environment of what we're doing. So again, I can, you can rest assure as a council, we've probably hired one of the best in the business when it comes to inclusivity, uh, when it comes to looking at these type of issues. Uh, do you want to talk about the, the C two business district a little bit? This is obviously gotten a lot of attention lately, really a small, um, area of downtown, basically from second to fifth and then, uh, to the south to Columbia and, and Bonneville, uh, to the north, um, encompasses highly Hispanic business is in this area, uh, diverse business section. Uh, do you want to go over some of the prohibited uses? Uh, cause these have gotten some attention, uh, these past couple of months. Um, and I'm just going to kind of go right through the list really quickly. And again, these are prohibited uses, council. Uh, gasoline service stations, automobile services or repair shops, except tire stores, outdoor storage of goods and materials, membership clubs, taverns, billiard and pool halls, amusement game centers, pawn shops, card rooms, bingo parlors, dance halls, nightclubs, similar places, adult theaters, adult bookstores, tattoo parlors, bathhouses and massage parlors, community service facilities, level two secondhand dealers, similar or like uses, although not specifically listed, are also prohibited. Commissaries for the preparation of food to be served elsewhere, adult business facilities. And, uh, council, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I'll open it up to council first. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Serrano. Mr. Gonzalez, thanks for your efforts. Uh, I understand you're the trash can man as well, so much appreciated there.
It's a big accomplishment.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I do have a quick question. Uh, you know, we're looking at this, this PMC right here, the twenty-five ninety oh five oh. I'm just curious, we're looking at at least in your work plan, a week, or excuse me, a week, um, a year out for some type of plan to be developed, right?
Right.
Um, is there any way that we could consider to beef up some of these activities in downtown? You know, looking at a temporary code?
Excuse me, real quick, just for clarification, um, this plan is, is scheduled to be done in May?
Yeah, May. So basically nine months, but I guess it can round it up to.
Okay, so it's nine months.
Yeah, it's about nine months.
Draft in April, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And will that, will that include any ordinance?
Well, fr- framework is certainly going to look at, uh, this zone in particular, C two and, and the codes within that zone. So as I mentioned, Council, Councilman Serrano, you know, that's certainly their wheelhouse and, you know, that, that's part of the, the inclusivity process is they're going to look really closely at that. And I think the best part is they are going to get direct input from business owners.
Okay. I appreciate that, but it, it seems like, you know, one of our ongoing conversations for years now is how to improve this and some of it might be to allow some of these activities. And, and my position has long been that we ought to at least do a temporary amendment that could sunset if it doesn't coincide with, with the, um, with, with the plan. Um, I still think that's a very viable way to get some of these businesses into downtown. Recognizing that the owners or lessors would be on the hook for making improvements that might ultimately not succeed. I guess I'll throw that to council. I, I think we ought to seriously consider some type of sunsetted temporary revision to the code to allow for some of these businesses while we're exploring what ought to be there rather than wait another year. But I do appreciate the effort, Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and Councilman Serrano, I, I will say it, it is a policy decision by the council. They can take incremental steps, um, to make those changes, even as we develop a master plan. But I, I will say uh, you certainly want to be cautious, because I look, as I look at the master plan, th- this is certainly a great template for future development. Uh, again, I really think the master plan will be the guiding light for the future development. And it's, it, it's going to be a really, really great document. But again, I, I mean, that's a council decision that's within your power, but I, my only caution is to really stay within the guidelines of that master plan and, and see it through, because ultimately I think that's what's going to be the guiding light, uh, for the future of downtown.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is, uh, Councilman Milley.
Yes, Councilman Milley.
Um, I'm fine with, you know, obviously, you know, not allowing a lot of these, but, uh, that's the one that seems kind of irritating to me is still the, the billiards. I mean, it seems like if you have a restaurant, you should be able to have more than one billiard table. To me, it seems kind of, I don't know, what I've heard is just one billiard table is all you could have. And it seems like you should have three or four, I'm not sure, you know, huge billiard places, but it just seems kind of ridiculous, because if you went to a place and you want to play billiards and you can't do it because the one table's used. To me, that just seems kind of crazy in itself, but I mean, obviously I understand a lot of the ones. I mean, I don't think we're even going to get people in one to come in be in the dance hall or whatever, but, uh, uh, it just seems to be kind of odd on the billiard one, because usually most people that play billiards are regular people. They're not gang related or, or something like that.
That has been one of the, the complaints by business owners in that zone. It seems random, but you know, again, these are council decisions that, that are beyond the capabilities of city staff.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I might just add that, um, I think in terms of administering the zoning code, a billiard, uh, hall and, and, and pool hall to me says that's an exclusive use of a building. I certainly don't think that a pool table is going to be, uh, categorized as a pool hall or billiard hall. Um, the, the, remember, as a matter of fact, I don't even know if they have those anymore. But, um, this was written a long time ago when you actually had buildings exclusively just for billiards or pool tables. And I, I don't know if I've seen one of those in fifty years, maybe?
This is Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, I think, uh, at this point, I, I just really want to give kudos to, uh, city staff for, um, you know, this is something that came from, uh, previous, uh, conversations that council retreats and obviously from the community as well. And so I think to, to be able to be where we're at today, where we are actually looking at a master plan that's considered, considering these things and, uh, having a pretty robust community engagement um, process, it's, it's, it's a big step from where we were. And so I really, uh, just want to commend staff for, um, really, uh, just the efforts and, and the engagement. And I just, uh, really look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is Councilman Maloney.
Yes, Councilman Maloney. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Um, and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the presentation. Um, obviously I, I've, there's items on, on in our downtown, especially in our code that I've been, that obviously, you know, we've all been questioning for a long time. So I'm looking, so I, I, I do agree with Mr. Serrano that I feel like there has to be some, we'll say low hanging fruit. I know the consultant, if they're on schedule right now, it's supposed to be wrapping up the review of our existing code, um, and zoning, um, I think this month. So we're almost out of September. Um, so I'd be really interested to see if, um, what their comments are. I, I, you know, we want to avoid any situation where we, where we create a temporary permitted use that becomes then grandfathered in. Um, you know, with, once you've given somebody, somebody something and allowed them to build a building, um, taking that away from them is, is, it's, it's a form of taking, right? So we want to be careful to, to not create a bunch of grandfathered uses, um, that are non-compliant with whatever future zone. But I, I, when I look at both the prohibited uses, but also, um, the, the level of detail in the explicitly allowed uses, C two zoning is different than every other zone we have in the city. It specifically enumerates, here's the things you can do. And then it additionally says, here's the thing you absolutely cannot do. And they're very specific. I, I just have to imagine there's, there's a way we can get some amount of relief, um, from some of the overburdened zone zoning requirements we have in C two that are not going to come back and haunt us. So, um, if the consultant, uh, perhaps the consultant will, will have some initial recommendations um, as to, um, some, some questions about what, what our zoning looks like, uh, as a for instance, that could, that could be for. Obviously, the master plan should be well more than just looking at our zoning and trying to figure out what the, how, how to restructure this and, and really look at uh, uh, so many more aspects. Um, but I hope we can carve out this little piece and, 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 you know, um, create some progress. And, and maybe be able to help some benefits here of like, of, of allowing some current uses, um, to no longer be, um, you know, something that has to be grandfathered in, into the code. Um, you know, good business owners who are just trying to do a good thing that could exist anywhere else in the entire city, uh, but can't be in just this one area. So anyways, I'd, I'd encourage that as well. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, could you go back to the map though? Um, I, I've, I've a question. There, there's a lot of different lines you had on the map that I'm hoping that you can help me understand what exactly the scope, geographical scope of, of this is. So if you go. So when you go back to actually, um, I think to the very first map you had towards the very beginning of the presentation.
Okay, there we go.
Yes, when I, when I look at that, and obviously it's a little small in this presentation, but I was trying to understand, we have, you know, we have something, it's a DPD area, which, which extends all the way down to what, uh, to tenth, is it?
Right about tenth, yes.
It's past ten, it's back to, I think it's all the way down to fourteenth perhaps.
Yeah, does it go all the way to fourteenth? I thought it went all the way to tenth.
Yeah, it looks like it's all the way down to fourteenth, because it's in line with Pasco High School. Um, but you, then you have the, the downtown heart. You have the greater downtown, which has, which is, is all the way up past, uh, Court Street, all the way up to one eighty-two. And I guess I, I'm, I'm really confused. What, it, what are we focused on for the downtown Pasco master plan scope?
The scope of the master plan is, is, is really going to cover, you know, that, that second to fifth as you come into the new overpass. That's kind of really the focus area that, that we're honing in on.
Okay, yeah, because I, I, that's, um, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed. I guess I didn't understand that in the original. Because when I think of, you know, city hall and I think of what, what it means for their city, for a community that's grown to the size that ours is, um, even when we're talking about, you know, we even have common wall structures down there, you know, adjacent to Fiesta Foods, um, Griggs, those are all common wall structures in there as well, where there's a number of uses. Those are certainly outside our, our key mass, our downtown area. As well as we have, you know, um, you know, amenities like the Franklin County Historical Museum, which I believe is outside, you know, which is outside the dimensions here, I believe. Um, and so there's, there's a number of assets and, and community, uh, opportunities here. I think that's, that will expand outside beyond this area here. So, I, I'm just not, not asking you to change the structure, but I'm just asking staff to change the structure of the, uh, of the current, uh, scope. But, um, I would be interested overall, how, how does this play into a larger picture of who Pasco is and who Pasco is going to be in the future? I mean, after all, that is what the master plan is supposed to do.
Yeah, and, and I don't think it's outside the boundaries to, to ask framework to look at some of those components. So we're going to meet, we actually have a meeting with them Thursday. So that's something that I'll address with them to see, you know, how vast that they could look at, because I mean, certainly, you know, one part of, of downtown certainly affects another part. So I, I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Great. Appreciate that.
Sure.
So otherwise, otherwise I'll just echo, uh, Mr. Alvarado's comments of, I'm really excited. We're finally moving forward and this feels like it's been moved at the speed of government. And I know Pasco, we, we try to be better than that. Um, but I'm looking forward to, to, to that. And also I, I do appreciate the, uh, the focus on inclusivity and the, uh, and the planning effort here and making sure that everyone's voices are heard, um, and coming, meeting them where they're at as opposed to where we are. So I just appreciate all that. Thank you so much for the presentation. Look forward to seeing the results.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, um, so we're expecting to, to get a, you know, a result in May of two thousand twenty-two after the, after the master plan is, is developed. And then we can proceed with the suggested planning, uh, zoning for that area, correct?
Right.
So in the meantime, is it too much to ask to, I don't know, staff or a consultant? Because I, I know that at our next meeting, we're going to get some business owners here
Right.
talking about, you know, things that they would like to have be allowed in the meantime. Is it too much to ask? And without, you know, I'm being careful and moving forward, just like as you explained earlier. Is it, is it, is it, is it okay to ask to come back with those things that we can look at to allow while this process is ongoing? Or is there something?
Yeah, I, I mean, it, we could certainly look at it. And, and again, as I told, um, Councilman Serrano, the city council has the power to sunset or, you know, make temporary changes with, within the code, within the zone. You know, that's really a council decision, you know, as, as city staff, you know, we could help with the implementation process. You know, as outlined in the scope of work. In September this month, um, framework is looking at the codes within this zone. So I mean, we're going to have a really robust look at, you know, not only their feedback. I mean, I, I, I know what's out there. I've been on the streets since June fourteenth, the day I stepped in this building. So I, I understand what the issues are. And the issues are probably one hundred percent certain they're going to be the same that I've found. So, you know, but, but it, I think what it does, it, it really is going to show what the needs are. Uh, I know we have a group of business owners that are already working on what they would like to, to stay and remove. I mean, I think we as city staff, we discussed it today. Um, you know, some of the things that have wiggle room. So I, and I do want to let business owners know that too. You know, sometimes we get blasted at the city as, you know, we're trying to impede their progress, but, you know, we met for an hour and a half today, re- really thinking of solutions of, of how we could work with city council to make some of these codes work, what can be removed, what, what could stay. So I mean, we're already diligently working on that as staff. You know, there, there are certainly ones that we, we all know in this room, which, which come up consistently, um, in this downtown core. You know, we're, we're not going to name any particular businesses, but, you know, one of the issues has been operating as nightclubs, you know, live music. And, you know, how that works within this zone. So and, and we're trying to determine with Eric Ferguson, whether, you know, live events trigger a nightclub and what works and what doesn't. But you know, I, I, again, I want to let the community know and the council that we're taking an exhaustive look at this, because we feel for the, we feel for these business owners. It's not like we're here trying to block them. I mean, uh, I'm with them just about every single day in their businesses, you know, really getting their feedback. And, and bringing it back to, to this staff who, uh, really cares about these businesses. So again, I, I want to send that message, you know, beyond the policies, beyond what the council decides that, you know, it's, it's heart wrenching when you're, when you're in the trenches with these guys. And they're just trying to make a living, you know, and, and we understand that at the city. So, um, again, I want this council to rest assured, you know, when I, when I stepped in here the first day, I promised I'd work a hundred and fifty percent and so is each and one of these folks here. So uh, we, we want to see a better downtown. That's why, that's why we invested in the master plan. And that's why we're even looking, you know, at taking these incremental steps even, even during the master plan. It's capable of happening. We can take small incremental steps to make changes and this staff wants to see the best for them. Um, but we don't want to blow out, you know, the, the intent of the master plan. The master plan is the big picture. What's going to bring development? What's ultimately going to be better for the city? But if we and the city staff can make some incremental changes, that can bring some revenue, especially during a pandemic. That's what we want. We don't want to block anybody. So again, you know, I, I don't want to belabor it, but
Yeah.
you know, we want, we want the best for these businesses more than anything, but yeah, it's within the city council's But yeah, it's within the city council's power to do that if they want to make those small steps. But again, you know, I really want to caution, let's, let's keep, let's keep the big picture in mind and if we can make those incremental steps, let's do it.
Yeah. So is, uh, I know there's at least, there was two other council members and myself that commented on this. So is next week too early to come back with something or, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, because, um, that would be wonderful so that we can at least take a look at it, give the, uh, some of the folks a chance to get some talking points that I know they're going to bring up and then we can move forward, um, at a minimum while this master plan is getting developed and then move it on to the next stage. But that would be wonderful.
Sure, Mayor, we'll have it for you guys and
Thank you.
and I'm sure we can deliver that to, to staff and city council.
All right. Thank you so much.
You got it. Thank you.
Any, any, just one last, uh, request or, uh, for comment from the council? Well, thank you so much again, Mr. Gonzalez. I appreciate all the, all the hard work and dedication. I, I've, I've already heard many, many comments about your, uh, your presence down there. So I appreciate what you're doing and
I appreciate it.
and the city manager allowing, uh, you know, it, it, it was long awaited. You were long awaited for this.
No.
Thank you so much.
And I do, my, I just want to say that they've been really supportive of my efforts. Everyone on, on, on this staff, they've said, Mike, get in the weeds and, and do it. And everyone from Adam to Dave to Rick has, you know, really allowed me to do that. So, you know, I, I thank them for just letting me go do my thing, so.
All right.
You got it.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that, council and staff. Next we'll, uh, get, uh, the next item is the naming of a new park in Chapel Hill neighborhood. Mr. Radkay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. A good evening. Um, yeah, in, uh, February of two thousand, council approved a resolution number twenty-four ninety-nine giving the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, uh, the responsibility of making the recommendation to the city council to name or rename parks and facilities throughout the city. Um, this policy that was enacted, uh, twenty-one years ago, uh, stated that naming for parks, um, should support a neighborhood identity and, um, be such that the meaning and significance of the neighborhood will remain over time. So with the development of the park in the Chapel Hill area, on Chapel Hill Boulevard, as you see on the vicinity map, and, uh, as discussed at the August fifth, twenty twenty-one Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, uh, the park considered the theme of the streets in this neighborhood, which were, uh, sort of horse and horse racing venue related. Um, and recommended the name Palomino Park for the new city park that's located in the Chapel Hill neighborhood. Uh, the city street naming committee, which goes into, uh, the, the planning practices, addressing, but also emergency services, has, uh, reviewed and approved the name as well from a safety perspective, uh, for the future. So, um, the, with this item this evening, uh, the, the council is bringing forth a resolution for, uh, or excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is bringing forth a resolution with the, uh, suggestion that the city council named this Palomino Park. With that, I've got a couple of photos for the council as well. Um, so, you know, the construction's been going on for much of the year. There's a lot of grading going out in this area. It's very hilly park, um, or it was a very hilly park. Uh, in May, we started a lot of the pathways and flatwork. As you can see, there are street, um, or pedestrian level lighting throughout the park, so the park will be well lit for the neighborhood. Um, irrigation throughout, which was one of the delays, uh, there were some supply chain issues with irrigation materials such as PVC piping this summer, but we were able to get through that. Um, new playground equipment, so this is some unique and, uh, new style playground equipment for, uh, the city of Pasco in that area. And numerous tree rings, which we'll, uh, get to that in a moment. By August, we have the hydro seed in. Uh, we asked the neighborhood to please stay off our lawn, uh, for a little bit till it got established, uh, and, uh, was able to, uh, uh, mitigate some of the weeds in the area there. Um, so it's grown in pretty, uh, nicely. Um, if you notice on the, the swing set and the playground equipment, uh, we do have a pore in place. Um, surface, which is, uh, ADA accessible, you can roll a wheelchair over it, but it's, it's soft for children to fall on. Um, it's low maintenance and it's not mulch or tire shreds that blows away in the wind. So, uh, um, it's a good surface and we're working to convert all of our parks to this. Um, and then here's just, uh, what we're seeing, uh, this, uh, I think it was a, a week or two ago, um, out in the area, the grass is establishing. Uh, the park's coming online. We've got our trash receptacles out there. Um, this park does have the playground equipment, it does have a basketball court. Uh, we are getting some volunteer help and service projects to establish a community garden in that area. And, um, yeah, we're really looking forward to this, uh, part of the community. And I think, uh, what we looked at in ACS with this park in particular, and Palomino Park is a community-led park. This was a number of years ago. The community came out to a neighborhood meeting to identify what features they wanted in the park. Uh, our design teams and our staff, uh, listened to the community to provide, uh, what we best could with the budgets that were allowed. Um, as a cost-saving measure, but also as a community building and a, a method for the community to take ownership. On October ninth at nine AM, that's a Saturday, we will be, uh, doing our Arbor Day celebration, a little bit off of the Arbor Day date, uh, with a tree planting, community tree planting in that area. So we're inviting the neighborhood and, and folks throughout Pasco to come out, help us plant the trees to the park, um, take ownership. And, uh, in a number of years, a kid helping plant the tree could look at a tree in the park, say, hey, I put that giant tree in here. So, um, really a sense of community pride, but, uh, tied in some, uh, presentation and promotion for the park. But the main topic is the naming suggestion of the park and I'll turn that over to council for any questions.
Mr. Radkay, thank you so much for that presentation, uh, despite all the things going on right now. This is, uh, very exciting
Yes.
uh, to have this come into our neighborhoods. It's, uh, I love the name and I'm sure the Palomino Taco likes the name as well. So, uh, council, any questions or comments? All right, well, I'll take that as we can move forward with that. I think the council, uh, at least not hearing from them, uh, is signifying that they're, um, in agreement and, uh, looking forward to those events. And hopefully the neighborhood will be very involved and, um, will appreciate that, that park as much as the kids will.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks. Next we'll go to, uh, the acceptance of the work for Geesa Stadium batting cages. Again, Mr. Radkay.
All right, I'll just keep my, uh, microphone on here. So as part of our latest installment of a series of, uh, improvements to Geesa Stadium, we have finished and are ready to accept work on the new batting cage facility, which was key, uh, not only in the, uh, long-term development of the facility, but also as a component to provide a player-oriented amenity and improvement, um, which was integral and, uh, helping us successfully, uh, keep the Tri-City Dust Devils here in for another ten years, um, with the community. So, um, just some, uh, facts and figures here. The original contract amount, which was approved by council, was just over four hundred and three thousand. Uh, we did have two change orders during the process totaling just over fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, change order number one was for repairs, um, to some electrical conduit and, uh, netting upgrades. Um, if you can see on the, the visualization there, we do have some netting on there that shows, uh, the, the parent club as well as the Dust Devils logo is, um, which really ties it together and identifies the feature. Change order number two was just merely to extend a foundation wall, uh, to accommodate some new stairs to the batting cages. So as a project comes along, you kind of see some things in the field that you need to adjust. Um, this project is complete, uh, has been inspected by both, uh, Parks and Facilities staff as well as the Pasco Building Department. And, um, materials and workmanship meets the standards specified in the contract documents and we're ready for the city to accept work on this project. So, um, if I may just kind of expand on this as well, since this is a, a facilities, uh, um, section, I guess, of, of the, the meeting this evening. Uh, we talked about ongoing improvements to Geesa Stadium. So twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, and we got a photo here showing some of the upgraded seats, um, new seats added along the first baseline, um, and then re- uh, replacement of the seats, the seat back areas there. We also upgraded the lighting to an LED component. So if you've driven past the stadium during a night baseball game, you really don't see that glare coming in to the other neighborhood. Um, it's also saves a lot on, uh, energy and is also more cost-effective for the operations of the field, too. So if you turn the, turn the lights on, you have to let them warm up. Um, future plans, and, uh, we're in discussions with the Tri-City Dust Devils and, uh, working through our capital improvement projects. Um, uh, as part of, uh, Major League Baseball's new, um, rules and regulations for minor league baseball teams, uh, the facility will require some expanded locker rooms, um, a small player dining room, which would be maybe, you know, for a table and a couple of chairs for players to have a separate place to sit. Um, there are new requirements for a female clubhouse. Uh, minor league baseball is seeing female, uh, coaches on the teams as well as female umpires coming up through the ranks and, uh, thus require the proper accommodations. And then a weight room as well. So as we work through some of these features, um, for continual improvement of the stadium, uh, we'll be bringing forth, uh, specifics on those types of projects, um, as they come to fruition. But, uh, just a little bit of update on the baseball stadium.
Thanks, you Director Radkay. And I'm sure, uh, Daryl Ebert and the rest of the management team there, Dust Devils, would, uh, appreciate moving this forward. And, um, any, any questions or comments from the council?
Mayor, I did, I did want to note that, um, you know, as we went through that process and whether or not the Dust Devils would stay in Pasco or potentially move to another, uh, city. Uh, I think the one thing that really impressed, uh, Major League and Minor League Baseball was the city of Pasco's commitment towards the facility. I, you know, we were in that stage, uh, uh, where we'd, uh, began the seat, uh, renovation and lighting and, uh, ultimately moved on to the batting, uh, fist cage facility. And I think that level of commitment on the city's part really impressed them and waited that decision, not only to stay in Pasco, but the longer season here in Pasco. Uh, so just congratulations to council on that once again.
Yep. Thank you, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel and Director Radkay. I know, uh, that I was part of a group of mayors throughout the United States that was advocating for this type of activity. And, um, and I saw, I, you know, they saw something in the Tri-Cities and it was those things that you just mentioned and, uh, appreciate the efforts and the, uh, you know, that this council who is moving forward. And it paid off because, uh, it's really, really cool to have them here. And, um, and I just see a lot of activity going on over there because I live nearby that area. So anyway, thank you so much for that. And if there's no other questions or comments from the council, I'll go ahead and bring it to the, to the next meeting for approval.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director Radkay. Well, that, next we'll move into miscellaneous council discussion. That's, uh, item number six. City Manager Dave Zabel, do you have any miscellaneous items before I go to the council?
I do not, although I, I, I will note reluctantly, maybe, perhaps, maybe I'll eat my words. But, uh, we're off our peak on COVID, uh, uh, cases per one hundred thousand. We dropped about a hundred in the last week or so, which as council recall, we were going up one to two hundred for several weeks. So we have a long ways to go to get to where we were back in early August, mid-August. But, uh, it's good to see that number come down from low twelve hundreds to, to closer to eleven hundred.
Thank you. Council?
Yes, Council Alonia, just one question for Mr. Zabel. Um, we, we've heard from our firefighters and first responders of how, how they've been struggling over a number of, um, um, items over the last, uh, uh, few months for sure. Um, do you have any status update to how, how our fire department is, is holding up?
Well, I know the chief is online and he, he did actually remind me of another, I, I did want, uh, uh, Chief Roski also to provide you some words. But, uh, if Chief Gere's online, perhaps he could probably better answer that, that question. Uh, certainly that's, that's something and, and council's seen the numbers. Uh, you all, you notice that our activity levels are much higher than they are or historically have been in terms of calls and, uh, uh, medical transfers and, and, uh, aid calls, things like that. So Chief Gere?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, the call volume is, uh, uh, about double what we ran last year, um, with a real mixture of calls. Uh, but, you know, that's certainly up. Um, I think overall people are doing okay. We're, uh, just waiting to get through the whole decision process of, uh, medical or, excuse me, religious or medical exemptions on for vaccinated, non-vaccinated people. That's kind of causing some stress. But, yeah, I, I think we're okay. I, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, my, I'll say my own interactions and we, we've had a couple, obviously, uh, had a couple negotiation sessions over the past month or two, based on, uh, the topic chief brought up. But, uh, morale overall seems pretty high. But I, I think that, uh, you know, long-term, uh, this kind of tempo uh, will eventually take its toll on staff and that's something we really need to be watchful of and, and, uh, monitoring and doing what we can to support them. So. Chief, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Zabel. Yeah, to, uh, maybe update council and the public a little bit on, uh, uh, the, the tragedy at, uh, Longfellow Elementary on Friday. Uh, something like that certainly shakes, shakes our community, shakes, uh, shakes, uh, our, our officers, our investigators, certainly the parents. Um, our investigation continues, uh, but what I can report tonight is that, uh, al- although a senseless act, it does not appear that there's, um, any good rhyme or reason for this. Um, our suspect, uh, acted by himself. He was, he was a lone assailant in that event. And there is no indication that there are other threats, um, to our community, uh, to our school district that are out there right now. Um, it's going to be a long time for us to put this case together and try and put some, uh, s- sense to, to what occurred with that tragedy. Um, and, but, but we're working with that. I, I also think it's important to note that the school district is cooperating fully with us and, uh, and providing, uh, counseling to their students and their staff. We've increased, uh, our patrols, um, in those, uh, school districts and areas just to help, uh, extend the confidence in the, in the students and the, uh, and the parents. But I, uh, a- again, a tragedy, but no indication that there's other threats out there. And, uh, um, everything indicates that he acted alone in, in this, in this senseless attack. So thank you, thank you for your support, council, and the phone calls, uh, that I've gotten as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief Roski. And, uh, I, I was just waiting for the moment also to, to, to say that, uh, I spoke with Michelle Whitney, the superintendent of the Pasco School District, and she extends her gratitude very much on the way the, the police department has professionally, uh, conducted and, and, uh, and took care of the situation. Uh, the collaboration between the Pasco Police Department and the school has been phenomenal. I know that, uh, I mean, there, there's no way, there's nothing good that comes out of these events and we all know that. And how we can prevent this from happening again will only, uh, you know, we'll see what we can find out and, uh, and, and go forward. But I know that the, the children that were on the bus and, uh, and the families, uh, there was, uh, staff, uh, school staff and the police department were at the booth building to, to, uh, assist those families in whatever emotional needs that they may have had. And, um, and I know the prosecutor attorney was there as well. Uh, but I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the Pasco Police Department, uh, along with Michelle Whitney, um, and everybody at the school district who's been cooperating in this. Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, you know, we draw prayers, go out to the family of the, of all these people that were negatively impacted in this situation. Um, so that's, that's what I wanted to share. Uh, City Manager Dave Zabel?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I did have one other item I wanted to share. We, uh, I wanted to give you a, or have our director Sigdahl give you an update on our business assistance and utility, uh, activities through, with the ARPA funds.
Director Sigdahl?
Uh, yes, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can, I can hear you.
Um, I'm having to report of, uh, one point, uh, one million dollars in the utility assistance that the council has authorized so far for electric, water, sewer, ambulance, uh, and solid waste, uh, to the city of Pasco, uh, Franklin, uh, PUD as well as, uh, Basin Disposal Inc. We have allocated almost, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars of that one point one million. Um, and as, uh, the moratorium on the utility shut-offs will be lifted in about three days, um, we are very happy that we're able to help a large contingent, uh, of our customers, uh, via these three agencies. Uh, we are also going to look at the allocation of the remainder of the funds as we go through the process and come back to council with any updates. Uh, similarly for our business, uh, assistance and resiliency support program, uh, that is being managed by Pasco Chamber of Commerce. They were able to, uh, work with all of the applicants to receive as much of a completed application as they possibly could. Uh, they met with, uh, their committee met last week, last Thursday and, uh, attempted to go through and attempted to go through the 178 applications that they have received. Just to keep in mind that these are not simple applications. You're essentially looking into the finances of, and reviewing and not auditing to a detail, but reviewing the finances and discerning the need and whether it meets the program guidelines overall of over 178 applications. They still have about 40 to 50 more applications to review. But the first of the checks have, are in the mail today. And there's still outreach with our small businesses to assist them with some of the missing pieces of documents. Our committee can clearly see that there's need and I think that's, that's a known truth. And we're just trying to meet the criteria and ensuring that there is defendability in terms of the funding that is being provided as well as equity and effectiveness in the process as well. At this time, I want to say that we, the Chamber of Commerce has written about $250,000 in check today. And they will be moving forward with that process as we, as we go. The committee will be meeting at some point in the next week or two and reviewing the rest of the applications.
Thank you, Director Sigil. Appreciate that update. Any comments from council? All right. So with that, City Manager Dave Zabel, that was all you had for tonight. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda and that's an executive session. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. And it's to consider the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1C. And it's expected to last for about 10 minutes. So it is 8:52. We'll give a five-minute break. And we will reconvene at about nine, well, actually a eight-minute break. And we'll reconvene at about 9:10. So with that, it is 8:52 and this, we'll go into the executive session. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. And this uh we'll go on to the executive session, so thank you so much for joining us tonight. Okay, it is nine eleven and we are back uh out of executive session, so appreciate uh. Uh the work that was done tonight and uh thank you for attending this meeting. It is nine eleven and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.